All right, any need for executive session tonight?
Yeah, I think a brief discussion of contracts would be in order.
Any need to amend the agenda?
We may have to table a new business item depending on whether our guest.
Move to accept the agenda.
All in favor say aye. All right, anything on the meeting last meeting?
Shaw stopped by and he would like a little clarification of what he had reported to us. It just amounts to him saying that that there's an additional $14 million in state funding applies statewide, not just to Pittsburgh.
Oh.
I thought it was pretty obvious, but we'll make that change if it's all right with you all.
Okay. Any questions in the orders?
Hearing none. So long, here's the four orders, three in the original project, one tonight.
I guess you didn't come very prepared.
Falling behind.
Town managers report.
Yes, thank you. Neil H. Daniels plans to begin work to repair the deck of the Kendall Hill Road, AKA Truck Route Bridge on or about Monday, June 14th. We've sent word over to Almia and Florence Crush Stone. And we will probably have a sign package a few days before they mobilize, just to give people that reminder. Traffic will remain two ways, but there'll be a flagger controlling, you know, a single lane that's open at all times. The town has placed an order for the portable generator capable of servicing either of the new Depot Hill pump stations and/or the Elm Street pump station as part of the bond-funded Depot Hill sewer project. Discussions are now ongoing about the final portion of that project, which was the automation of the sewage aeration process, given that the estimated cost has increased significantly when we've gotten the update from the vendor. Stay tuned for more on that. Paving preparations continue with the highway crew having recently replaced four culverts on Hitchcock Road. Prior to chip sealing work to be done on Oxbow, the highway crew will perform one final grading. And of course, they will have a signed package before the chip sealing folks show up to let people know that ideally this will be limiting the roads used to local traffic only while the road sets up. The town awaits word from the town of Chittenden regarding the proposed annual patrol and animal control coverage contract that the town of Pittsburgh has sent over. As was discussed in the executive session two weeks ago, Assistant to the Town Manager Linda Drummond will be taking the month of July off, essentially marking her retirement from full-time duty. Thereafter, she will return to work in early August on a part-time basis, roughly 20 to 24 hours. The town wishes Linda well in her transition and congratulations to her on taking time to smell the roses. ARPA funding, the town staff has begun to think about its priorities in the area of water and sewer infrastructure in an effort to be ready with recommendations for the Water and Sewer Commission and Select Board when the time comes to spend funds coming to the town from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. There may also be ways to fund improved broadband coverage through the recently created Communication Union District. And I'm sure that's going to be discussed by that board in the weeks and months ahead. I'll keep the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Commission informed as we receive more information regarding eligible uses for these ARPA funds and the logistical details associated with them. We should also remain aware of the fact that the state's recently passed budget provides an additional $150 million in broadband improvement funding. Further, as you know, there are discussions on Capitol Hill about a possible massive infrastructure bill, which may provide still more funding for the other infrastructure needs. So we should keep an eye on that as well. Velco plans to describe its plans to upgrade its Florence substation to the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission meeting of June 24th. They've also offered to come before the Select Board and explain what they have in mind. And the real question is, would you like to hear from Velco about their plans? Happy to invite them for perhaps the next meeting, which would be June 16th, if that works for you all. Chad, you just reports that the town's new highway truck is ready. Chad and I will be following up to take possession, finalize our agreed trade-in, and issue the approved payments to Kenworth and Viking respectively. And Chad also feels that now is the time to begin thinking about replacing the town's Highway Department F-350 utility truck, I think that's a 2010. We're working on getting a request for bids prepared and we'll place the matter on the agenda for an upcoming meeting before then a request for bids goes out. So you can hear from Chad about his perceived need to do that. We've also begun to discuss the possibility of whether the town wants to replace the body of the 550 truck that is now being held as a reserve truck that apparently is showing some age. And if we're going to hold on to it for a period of time, we might want to think about that body. So at least we'll talk to Chad about it when he's before us next time. That's all I've got.
A couple of questions on, are they, you said they're having a flagger on the trucker? Or are they putting a light? Because?
Both. They'll be automated lights, but there will be a flagging crew on the scene.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I'm thinking they're going to have a lane closed down at night, I would think, while they're working on, okay.
And we, and that's, we explained all that to Almia, they had asked that question specifically.
Yeah. And then going back to the sewer plant, did you look into see if these latest upgrades that we're going to do, if there's any money to help pay for those out of this?
ARPA funding?
ARPA, yes.
Certainly, certainly there'll be money coming to the town. We'd like to get clarification in these next few days as to exactly how much it'll be. And then we'll have up to 2024 to commit the money and 2026 to spend it. So the answer is yes, there will be grant funding coming to the town. And water and sewer is one of several different ways towns can spend the money. Is that your question?
No, my question was, because I brought it up last time from Regional, that Fairhaven had a project that's been in the works. And they were told that this money would be able to be used on that, even though it was already in the works. That was what I thought you were going to look up to try to figure out if that helped pay for that.
Was that, was that conversation involving Devin Neary or Ed Boe, for example?
Uh, it was, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know if I've still got my notes.
I can see that, it's down through the rest of them.
Yeah.
Because the Regional will also be helping administer these ARPA funds and giving advice to towns on how to spend it.
Oh, dun-dun-dun. Hang on. I believe that was, it's under Devin Neary, so I believe it was Devin.
I'll see what I can find out, I'm sorry, I didn't have a great slate.
Anybody else have anything to add? I did have a thought, though, through the report, like now that Linda's going to be part-time, if we want to consider an economic development director part-time, because that has been something that we've been talking about.
With the additional savings.
Yeah, so I kind of want to throw that out there, you know?
If you'd like, I can put together at least a job description and some thoughts about hours and compensation for discussion.
Yeah, and I don't even know what, like with that kind of position, if that's something that someone would be wanting to do part-time, but just figure part of that, you know, money is freed up, used for that. Any Select Board member remarks?
No, I think, oh, I talked enough last time, so.
All right, any public comment? Nothing, okay. And I guess, I'm guessing no one's here for anything that's on our agenda, or are they?
Tom Markowski is curious about the bridge request for bids.
Oh.
Hello.
I know, definitely the people on the screen, but that's all you guys.
I got you, Chair.
Thank you, more lumber than I am. What can I say?
All right, well, then in that case, we can, we'll skip down to new business and review bids for the construction.
Yes, as I pointed out in my memo, Madam Chair, we had seven contractors that attended our mandatory pre-bid site meeting. And then we had a bid opening which revealed just two bids. One from Markowski, which was the low bid. The unfortunate news is that we're going to have to investigate how the town's estimate of the project cost was so wildly at variance with the bids. I told Tom briefly at the bid opening that both bids were substantially higher than the town was looking at. I would say by the order of about three times. And for Tom's benefit, one of the things I've recommended to the board is to explore options, but first to try to learn how we could have been so far apart from your estimate of the cost for the project. And so if you're willing, I'd love to be able to sit down perhaps with our engineer, with you and/or Greg to discuss maybe what each of us put in the project and how we might figure out a way to get the project done and/or to reimagine it, its scope or its timing, et cetera. Do you think you'd be willing to have that conversation with us, Tom?
I would say so, especially if you're three times as much of what the bid was. And I've got numbers that aren't, don't even factor in our work and we're above that in those bid numbers. So it'd be interesting to see how you guys figured it.
Yeah, I think we're going to have the engineer in the hot seat to kind of rationalize what, what he told us a couple of years ago, three years ago. And also maybe there's other things we can discuss about possibly, again, getting the job done in some kind of a partnership or at least to talk to V-Trans, the funder, and let them know that there's a problem here.
Now, is this engineering firm the same one that engineered the pump station?
No.
It's, okay.
This is Engineering Ventures, which is sort of affiliated with Camp Precast. I won't say affiliated, but that's often a firm who's ordering, when you're ordering a structure like this, they'll often suggest that if it needs engineering work, Engineering Ventures has been good at this. We've worked with Engineering Ventures on prior box covert designs with no problem. But I don't know whether it has to do with them simply missing key features. Maybe there's an issue of COVID and supply chains and scarcity of labor or materials or long lead times. But I can't believe Pittsburgh is going to be the only one to deal with COVID-related issues. And so maybe V-Trans has seen this and is willing to counsel us and perhaps give us more time until the marketplace shakes out, or whether they're interested in giving us more money to get the project done.
That'd be nice.
So, because this evidently was started before I got on the board, where exactly is this covert?
As you pass, as you go down from Whipple Hollow onto Fire Hill, right by Florence Crush Stone, the entrance there, there's a Troy Minerals driveway right before, right after railroad tracks, that first set of tracks on Fire Hill. So.
All right, I'm coming, I'm leaving Pittsburgh, going down the truck route. Take the sharp corner, take me from there.
Okay, you turn left on West Creek Road, then you go by the railroad trestle, you're heading toward Fire Hill.
Okay, that's where I started, okay.
So you take Fire Hill and it's no more than two or three tenths of a mile until you hit a first set of railroad tracks. That's roughly the same area where the Troy Minerals Drive is. And that's, and right past that is a little, a little set of two steel culverts that handle a brook that runs under Fire Hill Road. The idea was to replace those with a bridge slash covert structure.
Okay, so I guess a handful of questions I've got looking over there. So why are we worried about the railroad?
We're worried about it because to move such heavy components, these are 25,000 pound sections, you're going to need a crane. And the crane needs to swing. And the positioning of the crane will determine where the full extent of the swing is, because that's relatively close to the railroad. And when you get within a certain number of feet of the railroad, you have to engage railroad, you have to get coverage for railroad insurance. You've got to pay their flagging rates. So that's one degree of difficulty. Another is the fact that there are GMP power lines in the area and they're planning on moving poles and those wires for the town at no cost to the town. But it's on their schedule, they're doing it as quickly as they can. And then another degree of difficulty is that both Almia and Florence Crush Stone need that driveway to be generally open to get material in and out. And that's about the same area where the crane would sit as designed to, at least for those couple of days that you're inserting the precast pieces into place.
Okay, I guess I've got to drive out there, see where it is, but then.
I'm not going to do that with you if.
Well, no, no, I mean, you've just, I know, because it's, it's after, well, it's the railroad tracks that just got fixed.
Yeah, right, correct.
The ones we went out and saw, so it's just beyond, just, just beyond that, okay, all right. So then I guess my next question, you're driving all these piles into the ground. Why? That road hasn't gone anywhere for 200 years.
No, no, you're going to remove the road to put this structure in underneath the road. So there's a lot of explanation to be done. You're removing the culverts and then you've got to pour the concrete abutments onto which this structure will sit. So there's going to be pouring of concrete and, and things of that nature. I don't know, because I'm not an engineer, as to why there's pile driving, but that's part of the design to install those abutments and being, having it ready to handle that, those pieces of the precast structure.
Okay, it just seemed like a lot for what should be a fairly simple fix.
I, I.
And I guess.
Agreed, but I'm hasten to say.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, my opinion, but then, and why aren't we just putting in a couple of plastic culverts to take the place of those two?
Well, the whole idea with the, with the improvement and upsize of culverts is to handle bigger storms and be more resilient. So you're always upsizing, these are two fairly large steel corrugated culverts, which are arguably ready for replacement. And when we worked with the Regional Planning Commission to evaluate all of our culverts, at that time, I think the highway foreman was Sean Erickson, the decision was made that it's time to go to a box covert. Then the engineers got involved, they assessed the site and they thought that you could either do a squashed covert or they thought less expensive would be the option of a poured-in-place foundation with the structure sitting on top. These are like C-shaped, kind of upside-down Cs that would sit on top of a poured concrete structure.
Okay, it seems.
And again, these are all good questions, which will all be raised in this conference call with the engineer and the Markowskis.
Well, I mean, I mean, I realize now from what I read that, you know, the summit has been made, we're, we've got a box covert, whether we like it or not. And I guess whether, uh, yeah. I mean, well, we're, well, we are, but we've also got, I mean, I just don't see, I guess my question is, that section, or if it was back before Troy Minerals, then it's getting heavy truck traffic and there's stuff going over that, okay, maybe it would need the pylons and all that stuff in there. But there's no heavy traffic beyond there.
That's correct, that's correct.
So I, I mean, I find it hard to believe you need all this structure there. And I mean, maybe Tom, I mean, I'm not putting Tom on the spot, but you know, it just seems funny to me that you're building such a massive structure for a two-lane, almost dirt road out in the middle of nowhere.
Seems like an overkill.
Does to me, you know?
Well, certainly explore that with Engineering Ventures and find out what, maybe more about what their rationale was. But I know there was a lot of discussions back and forth about what made sense as a structure that will also handle the permitting requirements from the Army Corps that was involved, stream alterations involved, and they all need to be happy about full bank width and those kinds of.
And I get that, but you still can put a pretty big squashed covert. I, I mean, I just find it mind-boggling that poured concrete is cheaper than a squashed covert. I just, I don't, I don't know.
Don't add up.
Don't add up, thanks, Joe, you're right, but.
Good, good avenues to investigate and we'll be back to you with some answers. So just to continue the conversation, again, because the town is certainly in no position to make up the difference between our estimate and the bids and the available grant funding. I think the only course really is to reject these bids, but to pursue further conversations, at least with our friends at Markowski, because they were the low bidder, to see what kinds of approach we could take to move forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Common sense approach.
Yes.
Well, yeah. And I guess the other thing I'll throw out is, I mean, you've got that box covert by Hards on West Creek. I mean, and I don't know how this box covert compares to that one, but.
And that was, that was a question.
You know, if, if it comes to the point on this road that it's way beyond what we can afford and do, we've got the covert, maybe that's the place to put that covert and find another option for this.
I just don't know, as I sit here, how unique or how much of a unicorn this particular design is for this particular site.
No, but I'm just throwing out.
Yeah, no, it's good looking.
Maybe some options.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep.
Let's look at all our options.
Good.
So we've got, that price, we've got to.
So is there official action you'd like to take so we can at least report to people that we have taken this step to reject the bids?
We must reject all bills when you pursue further route.
Kind of going back to the drawing board, that's what you're doing.
Uh, I think to some degree, yeah, yeah.
Reevaluate the whole situation.
Right, right.
We have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for attending, Tom, and we'll be in touch with you. And we look forward to trying to put our heads together. You're going to bring a lot more to the table than a lowly town manager, will I know that?
Okay, thank you for the update, I'll wait for a notification, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, so we'll jump right into the additional parking.
Yeah.
Parking area.
You've seen a very primitive sketch from me, your packet. And the idea is basically, we have a kind of a grass-covered supplemental parking area. And they're suggesting, because of the increased use of the rec, to expand on that by having a second area between the asphalt walkway to the tennis courts and the left field foul line of the ball field for an area which would have a single lane in the middle and 12 spots on either side. A total of 40, 24 additional spots. But Jen can speak to how much of the rec's being used and how this may or may not be a solution for the parking problem.
Yeah, with the games that have been going on, the parking has definitely been an issue. And it's great to see so many people that, at the rec. So it would be very helpful to have the extra parking.
People look familiar with the driveway there. Anything really to the right of the parking area becomes Police Academy land as it slopes uphill.
Even that bump out, though, because there is that bump out.
There is a bump out and we talked about tree removal, but those are some massive, massive trees. That would be quite a project to remove those. And as you saw, Chad had kind of quoted out the cost to take out about 10 inches of spongy topsoil and put down about 18 inches of stone. If that is something that you want the highway crew to do. He says his guys can do it in a couple of weeks and he'd be happy to do it. But I know in the past, there's been some sensitivity about limiting the road crew to. limiting the road crew to repair of roads and maintenance rather than, you know, big projects. And so I didn't want to step on any toes to assume that the board would be interested in that. I think the way they break down the cost in his proposal was about $13,000 of material, mostly stone, and about $18,000 worth of labor. And so for a 13 or $14,000 investment, you've already, you're already paying the highway guys if they're, if they can make themselves free, as opposed to maybe a 30, 35, one more project if they went out to bid.
What did you say?
Based on his estimates.
What, how long did you say he estimated it would take, a couple of days?
I think a couple of weeks.
Oh, a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
As you go, go in there. Many years back, I wondered why it couldn't be. When you go in there, you sort of bear a little to the right, quite kind of go around, there's a sort of a swampy area there on the left. Now, I don't know whether it's not permitted to fill that wet area.
We talked to Zappata Courage, who's our wetlands officer, and originally they were talking about putting it over further into that wet area.
And they can't hold that.
They can't do that, I'm afraid.
Should have done it 20 years ago.
Did I say that out loud?
I'm just gonna throw out the suggestion, whether it goes anywhere or not, doesn't make much difference, but it would be a good idea if this board took a trip over there, we met over there sometime. Just drove out in there and talked about it.
Yeah, I know you'd.
Sitting at this table, I mean, I've been out in there many times, but it's hard to visualize everything that's there.
Yeah, Rob Ketchum, of course, has also been an advocate for the project.
Yeah.
And Randy had been before, Randy worked with Jeff Byasusi on the permitting and learned from Zapata that yes, you cannot build a straight extension to this existing area.
Yeah.
Because that would go here, that's why they're proposing moving it over to this side of the little asphalt area pathway. Because over here would be non-permitable, according to the state. But yeah, certainly, if you'd like to come along, we can probably have Rob Ketchum and John.
I know, he took me out there the other day and he, but I think he wasn't sure, and I'm not sure if what, I didn't look, I guess.
Are the cones not there still?
What's?
Were the cones still there?
No, they weren't.
We had, we had.
I don't think they were, but I guess this, I mean, I guess we weren't sure, he wasn't sure, if it was going to stay level or if the stone would, would it still slope then? Because it does slope down right there, but would everything be brought up to the same level?
But I'm sure that they're aware of drainage. Now, there is a drain right between
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Drive, the asphalt walkway and where the beginning of the parking area would be. And he's certainly aware that they would need to grade it in a way that the water goes into that drainage.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, because, yeah, there's, I don't know how many inches difference it is, but.
Yeah, so he had two weeks, he listed out the labor and the machinery that would be involved. The Bobcat, the loader, two tandems and a backhoe with the number of hours per and all the stone purchased, the fabric, paper and seed and mulch and all that.
I know, and then also, because I guess that, um, the posts on the fence behind the dugout are rotting. And it would be, if, if, I think there's space for them to move closer to the dugouts, which would also open up some parking.
That was actually mentioned. Joe had actually brought that up and we kind of talked about maybe.
Let's put it this way, there's a long list of projects we could do to improve the rec. This is just the one that seemed to be percolating on the, on the front of the stove.
Right.
When Randy was departing and when Nelson was involved and then Jeff kind of advanced the ball a little bit.
Parking's always been kind of a pretty limited out in there.
No question.
There's no question about that, yeah.
So how much is there, because the rec has a budget for doing projects like this?
Capital amount, that was about 20, but we put about 10 or so into the fence. So there's probably in the neighborhood of 8 to 10,000 left. And of course, there's 4 or 5,000 that gets put into it every year. So for example, as early as July 1st, you could at least take notice of the fact that we would have enough to do it in-house by that time.
Right.
It used to be called the mower replacement fund, but that had grown because that far out stripped what we needed to.
Replace a mower, right, yeah.
If it turns out, and, and I, I would hope that it could, that this is something that the highway crew can do on their own or pretty much on their own.
Unless you had any philosophical objections to crowding out the marketplace or anything like that.
They could kind of work it in, there's
Yeah.
There isn't no set time limit on it or anything, it's something that probably should have been started a long time ago, but hasn't. And if it took a little while to do it, if they could do it.
And that's why there'd be time, if you want to take a field trip, we could arrange one.
I think it would, that would be my see, I'd, I'd like, you know, if everybody's willing, just make us watch 20 minutes to go out there and eyeball it and we'd probably have a better way of.
Look no one, right.
Yeah, but that's definitely necessary.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, the parking out there has been
Oh, it's terrible.
Never, never, really. So I, you know, I get that part, it's just.
Since we have a great rec area.
Well, no, and that's good, and, and uh, but we've also got this bridge in Florence that we've got a problem with, so we've got to watch where we spend money, but if the rec, if Jen feels that this is important enough that the majority of the money in our rec fund can go into this and do it and have it done, and she can get by a year before she has any more, uh, you know, it's probably something that we should seriously consider.
I know Rob Ketchum is in Yellowstone now, but maybe we could talk about when he's back.
He's not gone yet, he's still here.
Oh, well, I'll ask him about availability to set up a, a field trip and give you all some notice. Are there best or worst days of the week for everybody to get out there?
Yeah, I know, I'm pretty flexible.
No, I'm not flexible at all, but you just.
Would you prefer an evening or?
Evenings are better, yeah.
Would that work for you guys, a half an hour meeting on Sunday?
No, that's great, I guess.
Spring night, or tonight.
Uh, all right, well, good timing then, for everyone.
We'll schedule something and see everybody, thanks.
Okay.
And also, now that kind of, you know, COVID is receding, might be time for some more like fundraisers for the rec, you know? Big disc golf tournament or something, I don't know what brings in the most money, you know?
Disc golf tournament is a big thing. I haven't yet done anything with the disc golf. Because I've been busy with the sport, with the other sports right now. But I have to look into the disc golf tournament.
Tie that into Pittsburgh Day, maybe.
Well, we, we certainly had a disc golf tournament as part of pumpkin carving last fall. October, and we had 50 or 60 people out there, it was great.
Yeah, I think Shelley's actually decided to not do pumpkin, the pumpkin party on the same day as the disc golf anymore, though.
It's a different, it's a different clientele.
Yeah, there was like all these kids under the pavilion and these like disc golfers are coming out of the woods, like wandering over where they saw like the trying to grab free donuts, smoking cigarettes near the kids.
The kids have to learn sometimes.
We were talking about having it earlier, because it's also really cold, I guess, in the morning when they have done it in the past. So maybe in September, so maybe tie it in, I could tie it in the Pittsburgh Day.
If that works. First weekend in September.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Even if you did that same weekend, wouldn't necessarily have to be the same.
Same day, right.
Because that's Saturday, you could do a Sunday or however they do it, I don't know. We're talking about maybe.
Yeah.
All right, John, just one thing, if the entire board meets. That's true.
It's a open meeting.
It's not if all you're doing is going and observing. Remember, we found the exception, yes, I know, but if you're not deliberating
Conducting no business.
Or conducting business or votes, you can get around that. Because sometimes you just have to go out and see a site or kick tires, and we've done that in the past. But thank you, that's a good reminder.
And they can always take us to jail.
Well, yeah, or, well, in, in our, our schedules.
In June at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
And then the select board meeting at 6:30.
But our schedules, we may not all get there at the same time, I mean.
Yep. Good, thank you, Kelly.
All right, anybody have anything else on that, this topic? All right, thanks, Jen.
Thanks very much, Jen.
All right, update on the town sidewalk scoping study.
Yeah, as you know, Madam Chair, the committee held a kickoff meeting on May 25th virtually over the Zoom platform. And we're now considering when to conduct a public concerns meeting. That's basically when you roll out the idea of a sidewalk scoping study to the public and encourage people to come forward with any concerns or also ideas or suggestions on how to make the most of our study process. We can do it on a standalone basis or as part of a regular select board meeting. This would probably be in July. Right now, they're doing spade work to determine where in town the sidewalks might be feasibly located. They're planning a visit to town on June 18th, I think was the date. I'll let you know, in case you'd like to join us for a walk around. Yeah, that's Friday, the 18th, for just a site visit for their engineering team to come and look at prime candidates for sidewalk areas.
They were looking to, they never finished that sidewalk on Pleasant Street.
No, I, I, we, we. They, here's what also that they've done.
There's new owners there now that would probably let you put a sidewalk there.
Right, now, there's two things that they have asked for and they've already received it for the, for the engineers. First, the Route 7 sidewalk design plans, at least as they stand now. And second, the Dollar General sidewalk design. Because it's certainly a possibility that we'll consider extending the sidewalk up here on Plains Road. And they also want to see where the sidewalks eventually will go on Route 7 as that gets designed, so that they can build any adjoining sidewalk in a way that makes the most sense.
I did always wonder why that sidewalk just stopped right there, I should have assumed it was because.
We needed permission from Butters and a couple who were not interested.
Yeah.
We should have just done it by domain anyways.
We only, we only would have needed like three or four inches up there.
Yeah, I, we should.
Oh, I know.
Frustrating.
And it's especially because it's right by the school, which is where you want to see the most sidewalks. And then, so I did, because we, I know we talked about, it's maybe not right now that we need to start getting the word out, because it's not until like later July, right, is when they're kind of, so but there is, I don't have the date on me right now, but in June, the Pittsburgh Village Farm is doing like a kite flying day or something. Anyways, I thought that'd be a good idea if we had some stuff to maybe present, you know, for the people that are there.
They had planned to get us some kind of templates for handouts and flyers that we can use. I've already been in touch with the website people about creating a standalone website that would explain the process and also serve as a survey portal. So that people can give us their feedback that way.
Right, okay.
That's, let's move forward on that. If you could tell me the day for kite flying, let me know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure, I'll make a note too.
Yep.
Email you about it.
Yep.
Well, there's also something next Monday at the Village Farm, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Sunset party, and if I have something.
Oh, yeah, I got invited, did you get invited?
Yes, I got invited.
We haven't set for the meeting about the sidewalk study. We're just talking now about events to kind of gin up interest.
Barrett, Barrett called me and wanted to talk to me about their get together there for.
Oh, yeah, that's Monday night.
But he didn't have a time.
It's Monday night, 5:30.
Five, five or 5:30 to 7, right?
5:30 to 7.
He was gonna get back and he probably will get back.
Consider, consider yourself updated, that's what it is. And you can drive or walk on over and they're gonna have, they expect about 30 people to chat and watch the sunset.
Around 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, it'll be later than, it'll be later than 7 for sunset.
They called it a sunset social, so maybe they're just off on their.
I tried to remind you about that, though, I think it's on account, I'm sure it's on account, I forgot about that. Um, all right, so I guess the last of our new businesses.
I think we can table that.
Yeah.
Because again, I think that this particular person was satisfied with Helen's approach.
All right, perfect. All right, then we just have a couple of old business items. The Florence Substation, it looks like that's finally been officially.
Uh, yes, at least the closing on the real estate took place on May 21st. I've sent Jeff right afterwards an email following up on previous conversations, basically wanting him to kind of give us a roadmap for permitting with regard to any town permits, wastewater permits, Act 250 permits that might be required and kind of wanting for him to give us guidance going forward on this. And so I've started just the barest of bones request for proposals on the construction of a, of a one or two bay garage. Happy to have your input or maybe I should talk to you and Bill and kind of ask you to flash out what your ideas are. Good.
All right, and then, yeah, consider changes to town policies.
As you all know, we're waiting for magical 80% time and I guess we're 8,000 vaccines shy of that.
I heard that.
Prognostications are that within a week or so, all restrictions will be removed. One option, I suppose, for the board might be to hold tight until that point and then just allow for the new guidance from the state to dictate what we do. The real, the real question is, for the unvaccinated, wish, what would you like your policy to be? One of simply encouraging people to wear masks or requiring it?
Request.
Yeah, no requiring.
Yeah, good, good, that's fine with me.
People, people vaccinated should have free rein and and anybody that's not vaccinated, should, should, you ask them to wear a mask.
Yeah, encouraged though.
Encouraged, yeah. Because I think organically, this is just going to be
Yes.
Out of our hands anyway, that does.
Starting right now.
You go, Hank. I know, I mean, I've, you know, anyway, so, um, yeah, I know, it's, because I think they said like June best, or like it's any day now.
But nobody knows for sure exactly.
All right, but, you know, anyway, so.
Good, done and done.
Guess that ends the open part of the meeting.